Good evening. First, I'd like to thank God for that, for putting it on Mr. Day's heart to ask me to come. I find it an honor and I find it a privilege to stand before the citizens of Tazewell. And for those that don't know me, my name is Vera, resident of Tazewell all my life. And when Todd asked me to do this, you know, my mind would haywire. But then it came back to what does it mean to you, which makes it personal. And a couple of things right through, you know, if you're interested in black history, you can go on the web anywhere, look it up, bam, it's all there from A to Z. Anything that you could possibly imagine is on the web. But to me, black history is a time to reflect. Reflect on what was, what is, and what's to come. That's what it means to me. I look back and I thank the ancestors for the foundation that they made, not only for me, but for everyone in here. Even though it is designated as African-American black history, I'd like to think of it as being American history. Black history to me is not only to think about what has happened, the bad, but also the good. There's a lot of good that came out of what transpired. But we've never looked at the good because we're too busy focusing on the bad. But if we take a fourth of that energy and put it toward the good, we wouldn't have time to think about the bad. To me, black history provides the exploration of how different something that we are. We're different, but yet the same. I look at you, I see you for who you are. I don't look at the skin color because to me, that's irrelevant. I look at your character. I want to know who you are beyond your color. We can't do anything with our color. We can't change it. We can't bleach it. You can't lay out in the sun and become you. That's why we're each so unique, so unique that God took the time to number the hairs on your head. If all the numbers were the same, wouldn't this be a boring room? Wouldn't it be boring?
Absolutely.
Diversity, you know, Olah Joseph said it best. Diversity is not about how we differ, but diversity is about embracing one another, uniqueness. And that's what black history is to me. Together, we can make a change. For those that don't know, that I was the first female deputy hired at the Tazewell County Sheriff's Office. I had an opportunity when I first did the job, and I'll share this with you. I told my dad I was going to be an officer. He said, "No, you're not." I said, "Yes, I am." I said, "I have to." He says, "Well, why? Why do you feel that you have to go uptown and put on that uniform? No one in this family has ever been a cop. So why do you want to do that?" I said, "Dad, it's time for a change." I said, "Sometimes, we have to go against the ones that we love in order to make a statement, in order to be an overcomer, in order to break limitations." As a child, I always wanted to be an officer. And I had no intentions of giving up on my dream, even if it was making the one that I love angry with me because of my decision to follow my dream. So I took that job. For a whole year, my dad didn't speak to me. He never acknowledged the gifts that I gave him. He would put them in a huddle. I would walk in and I would speak to him, and he would turn and go the other direction. Change comes with hurt. Sometimes, we have to get out of our comfort zone. But I stood in there. I hung in there. And then finally, when I got promoted, he said, "I'm proud of you for hanging in there. I'm proud of you. I see what you were doing. I see exactly what you were doing." Sometimes, it hurts. Making a change and making a decision, sometimes we have to think outside the box. One more thing I'll share with you. I had an opportunity to meet a guy who's Aryan Nation. He was incarcerated. You know, Aryan Nation, I don't need to elaborate on the F. But we had trying times there because he had a problem with me being in command. And so what I did was, I made him a trustee. He worked the halls, he done the laundry, and then he sent a request to me. "I would like to speak with you." I bring him into the office, and he sits down. He said, "Lieutenant Eves," that's who I was at that time, "I want to thank you." He said, "Despite of what I felt for black people," he says, "you showed me something different. You let me know that we are all the same people. You let me know that I no longer have to look at you any differently from what I look at anyone else." Aryan Nation, he said, "Lieutenant, may I help you?" I said, "Yes, you may." We together have made a change. We can do this. But it takes a changed heart. This is all about the heart. Where is your heart at? I've always said, "The badge doesn't make me. I make the badge." And what do I want it to represent as far as I'm concerned? What legacy am I going to leave? What legacy are you going to leave? What will your history dictate? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vera. So next on the agenda is introduction of Aaron Delisby.
They're having their meeting.
Yeah, their meeting was moved to tonight. So next, Todd is going to introduce Vanessa, and I'm not going to try to pronounce her last name. So Todd, do you want to...
Absolutely. Yeah, I'd like to say, first of all, since 2013, since the start of Tazewell Today, I've been blessed to have the opportunity to work with Amanda, and I'm seeing future opportunities and working with Vanessa. And I spoke to her last week, and I'm already jumping around trying to figure out how I'm going to keep up with it. So that's a good thing for Tazewell Today. But I'm not going to rattle on. Vanessa, if you want to come up and introduce your program and what you plan to do, and welcome to Town of Tazewell.
Thank you, Todd.
Absolutely.
I've heard you love public speaking.
All right. Let me begin by saying, I was like, "Oh, thank God, I'm not following Vera." There'll be a break, and I can like get my Actually Other Than Green Space project like great. Thank you. No, seriously, I actually wish we could have collaborated on this because it would have been way more convincing, because I'm terrible at this. So thanks everybody for having me here. Thank you, thank you. I'm just going to read right off of this computer. I'm very excited to be operating as Executive Director for Tazewell Today. Since I started in the beginning of January, we created a website, clickable links, email subscriptions, local business directory, and connections page for small businesses. I'm going to skip all this other stuff. I've come forward with a map and a list of objectives and phases that I'd like to work over the next three years for the district here. This proposal also includes some purchases and tools that I believe may help expedite the project. So this is a green space project. The objective would be to utilize an already empty green lot, approximately 1.67 acres, parallel to Main Street, beside 329 West Main Street, into a thriving green space. Main Street Park will keep Main Street open for many manageable independent events, add more space to pre-existing events, and create green space for the local community gathering. The Main Street Park would be utilized as a space for relaxation, as space to eat at picnic tables for children to play, people to rest, and an area to sit under flowering cherry blossom trees. The project includes a children's playground, a children's garden area, and a community space for events. This is just a list of some of the items that we have there.
It's the property where the hotels want to go, and the cam is currently using it as a used car lot.
Oh. So this park would include a small playground for children, potentially with two bay swings, a child's community garden that would work directly with the Library Garden Club. The library has several master gardeners, and spring classes and summer camps would be included there. There would be picnic tables, an area for taking to-go food from local restaurants or the farmer's market or maker's markets nearby, a parking area for food truck rallies, markets, and regular parking for regular hours in the park. The parking for the park would be accessed by parking behind or on Main Street. This would also be utilized for a pop-up area near Main Street for seasonal festivities, fundraising, movie nights, and potentially a second stage and entertainment area during festivals. Other additions in the future could be stairs, paths, trails, a gazebo, pavilion. We have a digital kiosk we're supposed to be utilizing, potentially a fountain pond, bathrooms, et cetera. The phases for the park would include, for this year, potentially a dumpster. I used to collect all the debris from the area, appropriate machines used for cleanup, terrace slope. We put in retaining walls. You could also do a flattened area for the top near Main Street where we would have our seasonal pop-ups. And obviously, the land would need to be graded and leveled, and then obviously seeded. I think we could purchase some picnic tables to start and put in the child's community garden. I came up with pricing for that, which I can present to another client. And then possibly a trail leading from the library to the garden, and then of course, tracks for sepoils. And then of course, it moves on to 2023 and 2024 with the completion of the park. I think this park would be beneficial to our community. I have five children, and I can't really do anything on Main Street with them unless there's a festival or an event here. And I think it's important for us to be able to take our families here and experience Main Street without having to buy a shirt or go out to dinner. The idea would be, we're here to play, and we can get something to eat after, or we can buy a shirt while we're on our way. That's it.
That's pretty cool.
Yep.
You better do your pull and punch pitch.
Oh, and I better see all of you with the pull and punch. Who's coming?
Two of them were up there last time.
Todd, you're going to do it though, right?
No. Joe, you go do it again?
The 26th of this month?
Yeah.
You put me on the spot, so I guess I'm kind of happy.
And it's on video and...
Perfect.
That's why I said you got to pitch it.
My pitch hit my best. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. You didn't tell us how to pronounce your last name.
It's Reddittish.
Reddittish.
Thanks, Vanessa. So next is a presentation by Bob Lawdenberg.
Let me introduce Bob Lawdenberg and his team, first of all. 2013, Bob Lawdenberg was invited on board to address, back then, the deficit that the town was facing. It was very, very helpful in working with us to get us out of there. If you recall recently, I say recently, probably a year ago, VRA requested, due to the $7 million bond issue on sewer plant, that we look at. Well, my choice was VML VACO because of their success. But Bob's here to introduce that project and the study that they did and tell you what the results are. I will say before we start it, that staff presented changes in budgets in the past that you have already approved. And you'll hear that tonight. So there were no changes implemented due to VML VACO or versa. So I'm going to try that. Bob?
Thank you, Todd. And it was a pleasure over the last year to work with Todd and his staff on this project. And we wanted to have this opportunity to meet all of you personally tonight and go over some of the highlights of what we found as we were looking into the financials of Town of Tazewell. So I'll begin by just telling you a little bit about VML VACO Finance. If you're not familiar with us, we were established by the Virginia Municipal League and also the Virginia Association of Counties in 2003. We're organized as a nonprofit corporation. Our Board of Directors is selected by VML and VACO. And that's with the mission of assisting local governments in various areas of finance. One is municipal advisory and financing capital projects. We've assisted local governments in financing over $1.1 billion in projects. We also have investment management. We have today over $4 billion in assets in our investment programs. We provide accounting services. We're the administrator of Virginia Government Finance Officers Association. So anything financial, those are the areas that we get involved in. So in our municipal advisory services, we are registered as a municipal advisor with the Securities and Exchange Commission, with the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. This is under federal regulations that require anyone who advises a local government on financing projects, you have to be registered. And with that, certain rules apply. One is an advisor must have a fiduciary duty to their municipal advisory clients. So we're looking at what's in the best interest of the client, not necessarily what we want to sell or pitch, but what's in your interest. All of our staff has taken and passed the Series 50 exam, and there's certain continuing education requirements for municipal advisors. We have a staff of five municipal advisor representatives. So Taylor Bryant being one of those, I'm another, and then we have three back in Richmond. Our experience has been acquired by assisting local governments in over 300 financings since we were founded. This is a list, not just of financing, but of all the local governments who have used any of our programs since our program was founded. And basically, it covers almost all the localities in the Commonwealth, from very large localities to smaller ones. Now, in the financial review, we were engaged by the town to review the Water and Sewer Fund as well as the General Fund to evaluate your capacity to issue new debt through VRA. So this was a requirement, as Town Manager said, this was a requirement that VRA had, that you bring in a municipal advisor to do this work. So what we did really involved three things. First, we developed a pro forma analysis, basically looking forward at Tazewell's water and sewer revenues and expenditures over the next five years. So you're undertaking water and sewer debt. What was really key to VRA, obviously, is will you have the revenues sufficient to cover this debt going forward? So that was the key part of the analysis. But we also looked at the General Fund, revenues, expenses, and fund balance, because that's the backstop for this. If there's not enough revenues in the water and sewer system, then VRA is going to look to the town. The town's given a second pledge to back this loan. So they wanted us to look at the General Fund as well. And then we made some financial policy recommendations. So for tonight's purposes, I'm going to summarize our findings into these six financial benchmarks. These were among the things we looked at as we did our analysis. And I think these are six good areas to look at. On the Water and Sewer Fund side, we looked at debt service coverage. Is there enough revenue to support the debt that the town is taking on in the Water and Sewer Fund? That was one benchmark. Number two is looking at the financial health of the Water and Sewer Fund. And we do that by looking at what's called the unrestricted net position. Then we wanted to look how liquid you were, how much cash was available to meet unforeseen needs of the Water and Sewer Fund. So for that, we looked at the cash position of the Water and Sewer Fund. On the General Fund side, looked at very similar things. Debt service is measured debt. Unassigned General Fund Balance, which is a measure of financial health and cash balances. So now I'll tell you what we found in our analysis. The first area is debt service coverage. And this is where we really spent most of our time looking at this. So I'm going to spend a little bit more time with you to describe what we did here. So what was very critical to VRA, whether they were going to approve this loan or not approve the loan, is going to be based, number one, on is there enough revenue to cover this debt going forward? This is a very significant financing that the town is doing. So their goal, VRA's goal, and this is kind of an industry standard, is that you have net revenue available for debt service that equals about 115% of your actual debt service. So they don't want to just show that you have enough revenue to cover debt service. They want to cushion above that 115%. So the revenues that are available for debt service include net income from operations. That's basically what profits left over at the end of the year that can be used for the new debt. And then a couple accounting items. Expenses that are part of your operating financial statements that don't really represent cash out the door. It's more of an accounting entry. So we add that back because those dollars are actually available for debt service. We add back interest, income, and expense, because that's not part of the operating statements, but it's still available for debt service. And in your case, you have payments from the PSA, and those are available for debt service. So we added all those things together to get the revenue side. On the debt side, we looked at what interest and principal you would pay on this VRA loan, and this debt service would begin to get phased in beginning in fiscal 2023, and then it ramps up from there. So looking at the revenue side, so we want to go out into future years. We looked at the next five years and what revenues would be available to the town. So to predict your revenues, we wanted to look at the units, the amount of water and sewer service that are being sold to clients. And you have four rate elements, water in town, water out of town, and sewer in town and sewer out of town. Now, each of those has a base rate and an overage rate. And so we had to back into estimating what the base units and the overage units were. Your billing system doesn't pick that up. So we had to back into that to calculate that. And then based on looking at the last five years, we tried to see, are there trends here in terms of the amount of usage that is going on in the town? Can we extrapolate that going forward? So we're looking for trends. And we also talked with town staff to see, you know, what can we expect over the next five years? So with that, we determined the revenues, and then we overlay on that the new debt to see, how does all this match up? So in looking at the water usage, the blue lines show actual base units of water usage in the town. All these, these are audited numbers. So these come out of, these match what's in your audited financial statements. So when we looked at those six years, 2016 to 2021, there's not one clear trend going on here. It looks like the base units, and that's, that really equals the number of households and businesses that are receiving water service. So when you look at those six years, they seem to decline over several years, then they increase. Couldn't find a real clear trend, but there was an increase in the last three years. So we took a pretty conservative approach. We assumed a small amount of increase over the next five years, but we didn't want to assume a large increase. The overage rate, so you have the base rate, that's the number of households. Everybody pays a base rate for that. And if you're a heavy user, you pay an overage rate. Here, it was very difficult. We couldn't pick up any trend there at all, and the numbers were kind of all over the place. And so we just assumed steady continuation of overage rates going forward. Now, I have to say, I'm not completely 100% confident in the billing system that gave us these numbers. And I've told staff this. I think that the numbers were a little bit erratic. And I think it's probably necessary, you know, short of getting a new billing system, I think what I would recommend is that the town take a look at this data on a monthly basis and try to document or explain, you know, variations, because we were seeing a lot of variations in the race. And that makes it difficult for you from a management standpoint, you know, when your data is a little bit unreliable this way. Now, on the sewer side, the trend's very similar to water side, you know? This is the number of, basically, households and commercial businesses that subscribe to sewer service. So see a little bit of a dip, then a little bit of an increase. Again, when you look at overage, it almost mirrors the water side. It's just very erratic numbers, and it gives me pause about these numbers. But this is the best data that we have, so we go with it. Okay?
Would everybody go in 2017?
I don't know.
And Todd, do we have any users that would just be sewer? Because if they're sewer, they're water.
We got a few, but they're consistent.
Okay. Yeah, I think the base, I think the two base numbers, they're about, you know, they're similar. That makes sense to me. It's just... It's just the overage, though. We have little problems with that.
If it's 2017, everybody would quit drinking water. They just stopped.
So I'm letting you know this because, you know, the output is as good as the data that goes into it. We're giving you our best estimate on, you know, what the future holds. But it's something you all need to monitor very closely and make sure that we're on track. So the new debt that comes on, this is what that looks like. The dark blue is existing water and sewer debt, declining a bit over the next five years. And then you have significant new debt coming on beginning of probably next year and the years beyond that. So that's what we're looking at. And you put these together, and the top line is available revenue to cover debt service. The bottom orange line is your debt service on this new debt. And then the gray line is the 115% covers, the cushion above the actual amount of debt service. So we're looking out over five years. We're using our best judgment on this, the best data that is available to us, and we think you're in good shape. We think that your revenues cover debt service, even goes above the 115% coverage ratio. So that's a good news story. Again, you want to continually monitor this year by year, so.
And Bob, is it not, especially in this part of southwest Virginia, it's a continually moving target because of our dramatically declining population?
Yes.
So, you know, you'll set water rates or sewer rates based on three of your outlook, and then when you get to three years, it's almost like you got to start over.
Yes, yes. And what the takeaway for me from this is, we expected to come in and make recommendations about increases in rates that the town needed to take. You all were very proactive on that. You knew you had this debt coming up. And your staff and council, I think, were very proactive. And you've put yourselves in a very solid position when it comes to the water and sewer system. That's to your credit. These are challenging times. The population doesn't turn around, and that challenge increases. But I think you are on solid footing. That's our judgment. Now, we'll look at the other measures, and these are more looking at points in time more than the kind of analysis that we just did. But unrestricted net position is looking at the financial health of the town. Our goal, we recommended this goal for the town. Your unrestricted net position is currently negative, and we want to see that turn to a positive. What is unrestricted net position? Well, when you look at the, basically, essentially the balance sheet of the water and sewer fund, you have your assets, you have your liabilities, and then what remains is your net position. So if your liabilities exceed the assets, this includes future obligations, if that exceeds your assets, you'll have a negative net position. So you don't want to stay in that posture, you know, for the long term. You want to try to turn that to at least neutral or positive. And with the, I think, the rate increases that took place over the last year, you're already seeing significant improvement there. In fiscal 2021, the unrestricted net position, the amount that was negative declined by 62%. So you have $1.2 million negative net position. That improved dramatically. Almost two-thirds of that went away this last year, and I think that's largely because of the actions that the council made in terms of restructuring the rates that allow, I think, more cash and assets to remain under balance. So that was a good thing. And then number three, looked at cash position. And here, we're looking at how able is the water and sewer system to address, you know, unexpected needs, you know, having to immediately replace lines or do maintenance or what have you. That's going to depend on how much cash you can readily access. So VRA's goal, what they look for is that you have cash and equivalents, like short-term money market investments, that sort of thing. Cash and equivalents equal to 60 days of operating expenses. So if you had no revenue for 60 days, you still have enough cash to continue your operations. As of June 30th, the end of the last fiscal year, your cash and equivalents equal 21% of the expenditures. That's equal to 78 days of operating expenses. So you're exceeding the VRA target. So I look at water and sewer fund, and you all are really right, put that on pretty solid ground. Now, we look at the general fund, three more measures. These are similar to the last three. So debt service is a percentage of expenditures. VRA's goal, their stated goal is that debt service is less than 15% of expenditures. This past year, your debt service was about 5% of expenditures. That included a one-time principal payment, and you take that out, and your debt service is about 1.3% of expenses. You have low debt here. You've managed the town, so you're not, obviously not overextending yourselves in terms of debt. So that would be a credit positive. Any rating agency would like to see that. The unassigned general fund balance, this is the financial health of the town. VRA sets a goal of setting this unassigned general fund balance equal to 8% of revenues. Like in the water and sewer fund, this is a measure of your financial flexibility, and it's basically looking at assets minus liabilities. And then of that remaining fund balance, what is unassigned or available to be tapped into? So in the last fiscal year, your unassigned fund balance equal 6.7% of revenues. That's a little short of VRA's target. No, I'm sorry. So it's higher than VRA's target. 8% is our recommendation to you. We think, we appreciate that VRA is setting the bar where they are, but we think 8% is a more reasonable target, because if you put this in terms of months, that's about one month of revenues. So we think 8% is more reasonable. Yet, you do exceed VRA's target on that, so they wouldn't have an issue. Lastly, we looked at cash balances. And here, VRA does set a goal of cash equal to 8% of total expenses. Again, this is a measure of your liquidity, your ability to meet unexpected needs. As of the end of last year, you had cash equal to 36% of expenditures. Again, I think there were some revenue enhancements in last year, and you're seeing the benefit of that, plus probably more importantly, ARPA, the American Recovery Funds that are coming in, and other unearned income. So you have these federal grants coming in. So right now, you look at your financial, your financials got a lot of cash, but we know that that's one point in time. So this isn't a typical year by any means, but at this point, you know, the end of the year, looking pretty good, so. The takeaway. So here's a summary. So water and sewer side, debt service coverage looks good, cash position looks good. You're making good progress in strengthening the unrestricted net position. On the general fund side, very low debt service. Your unassigned general fund balance, we gave you a yellow check mark there. Checks the box for VRA. We think probably need to, you know, have more cash at the end of the year in your fund balance. And your cash balance, since last year was such an unusual year, I think you need to monitor that. So you've got the flexibility that you need. So basically, you came into this assignment not really knowing, you know, what the result was going to be. We were pleasantly surprised, primarily because of the proactive steps that the town has taken to really strengthen its financial position. I think for that, you all should be committed for sure. Any questions?
If you take out the offer fund, would those marks be red?
We can get back to them later. Any questions?
I'll just have to take you back.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so next is our new business recognition, the Lady Project Salon Two, Angela Clemmons. One month? One month? All right, we'll move on. So next, I need a motion to approve the minutes from Council meeting on January 5, 2022.
Make the motion.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, states or by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states or by saying nay? All right, the minutes are approved. Next, I need a motion to approve the financial statements and financial reports for January 2022.
So move.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, states or by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states or by saying nay? Our financial statements and financial report from January 2022 are approved. Next, committee and conference updates. Councilmember Davis, are you able to give us planning commission committee update?
Yes, the planning commission update is that we did not meet the funds.
Easy enough.
Yes. And you were all present with the parents, so we already know what's going on there.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. So now we'll move on to our unfinished business. Mr. Davis will give us an update on the sports complex.
Okay, just as each of you are aware, the final rule came out January, I'd say second, don't quote me on that, somewhere close, and it does not come into effect till April. So between now and then, the feds could do a 180 and completely, completely change it. But I will say, as of right now, our most sought-after option is to look at the funds and take advantage of the $10 million. It's kind of like when you do your taxes for medical, you've got so much that they credit you for. Well, ARPA's got it set up, and our Corbin Stone, I sent that email out today, sent it to federal government, pretty much throwing local, small local governments a bone.
It's like a standard deduction.
It's a standard deduction, and all it takes is a check mark. But in our opinion, we've looked at it, law firms looked at it, Corbin Stone's looked at it, and we are more on track now for using the funds to go toward the sports complex than we actually were before.
That's great.
So that's an opinion. And as long as I don't hear any differ from anybody, I'm going to stay the course.
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep. Okay, so you've got some communication in there. I'm also waiting on a letter from the law firm of BML. Have not received it yet, but I'm patiently waiting on that. And I already know that it's going to come back and echo the sentiments. So any questions? Let me shed a little bit of light on the sports complex. Next Tuesday, I will get a triple P proposal, which we all knew was coming, an unsolicited proposal. I've got 30 days to react to that unsolicited proposal, and there's another timeframe that we actually have to run an ad in paper to invite competitors. And I'm being coached really well with a lot of experience. I've never been down this road. It is right now approximately a $17 million project. The numbers that are produced out of this project are astronomical. They will be shown and presented to council and the IDA over the next month or so through an updated shamira report. So we're really excited about it. So can we make payments on $17 million? Absolutely not. Not going to happen. No way. So council voted a month or so ago to go through a fundraising process, try to take advantage of some of the federal money that's been, that's out there. Y'all heard a presentation from Jim Baldwin, CPPD, that was pretty powerful. So ultimately, the goal is to get that down to zero, obviously, but somewhere hovering around $5 million. And unofficially, talking to a couple of local banks, $5 million leaning on another $12 million is pretty attractive. So we'll just have to see how it goes. You know, right now, to me, it's the biggest project for success in adding a higher quality of life to the citizens here in Tasewell. It won't, you know, it'll demand people, and I'm a firm believer that it'll be a game changer. We absolutely cannot continue to sustain the miracle that was just presented by Bob Lotterberg if we don't change the economy of Tasewell. So we're doing everything we can. With that being said, unless you have any questions, Mayor, oh, God.
Anybody? So next, the update on the Tasewell Center.
Okay, had an opportunity yesterday, actually, Dr. Sharon, and we'll draw them, you have right here in front of you. She has struggled quite a bit with architectural work, but it's our understanding, it's our understanding that hopefully in the next October is the deadline for spending some of the funds she's got. So it's our understanding that by October of '22, it'll be near completion of construction, quote unquote.
Like hoping?
Yeah, I didn't.
Fair question.
But I didn't, no. Just near completion. Maybe hoping. So I'm just giving you an update. I'm really excited about this. I haven't been for quite a while, probably five or six years. It's all okay.
Any questions? All right, so next, the demolition bid results.
Okay, this evening at 2:00, apologize for not having the package, Robin and Leah and Good, who are not miracle workers. 2:00, we opened up bids for the demolition of three structures on the rain yard. And just to let you know what they are, Reclaim Company was $180,000. Taffin Fry was $124,000. Empire Salvage came in at $97,000. C N S Destruction came in at $140,000. So really impressed with those numbers. There was a comp and deduction in there also. I won't go over those, but if you're standing at the road, the front three buildings, the one, obviously the biggest buildings, are totally deteriorated, and the little blue building on the far right. So I will be looking at it budgetarily over the next couple of weeks. I'll send out a recommendation, try to get support from council to proceed forward, and you can ratify that at the March meeting, whatever decides to do. I just have an attitude to look at and analyze. Pretty good numbers, though, for this economy. One of the biggest benefits, it had a 60-day demolition on it, and we decided to extend it to 120 days to allow the demolition firms to take advantage of the steel that's in it. So the price of steel, or them not tearing it up and picking it apart and utilizing, they actually got those numbers for a actually got those numbers where they were. It was actually made to hover around $200,000. But because of the additional 60 days, we were able to get it under $100,000. You thought I got one there?
Any additional questions? All right, next is the vote on a special exemption or exception permit for 168 Main Street. So this is what we had the joint double hearing about. So we just need a motion to approve or to decide a decision?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I would like to address some of the questions that were raised during the public comment. I know one of the questions was about the parking.
Yeah, a second.
And the owner of the building had.
Hey, Emily.
Yes.
What, just, hold on one second.
You got a second, you just got to go into a discussion.
Go ahead, Emily.
Okay. The issue of the parking, the owner of the building does have an agreement with, I believe, the bank that owns the property behind that building, and the tenant and the Airbnb will be parking in that area, and the parking instructions will be given to them prior to them checking into the Airbnb. I don't think that the, that they addressed whether they were going to be entering the building from the front or back. I don't remember that being a part of the planning commission meeting. I remember the parking, and it is a one-bedroom apartment currently, so it will be just one bedroom. So I would say it would be two people, maybe three at the most, if they have a couch that they can sleep on. But that's it for the questions that were raised, so I wanted to go ahead and address that.
All right, thank you.
For the parking, Teresa tried to get a letter from National Bank in Blacksburg, and she couldn't. But I did have a letter from a man to kill him, to use one of her spots behind the library. But she asked too for her Airbnb.
Excellent.
But the ladies did park in the bank parking lot, they don't have a problem with people parking there, they just can't put their own paper.
Makes sense. Kind of wink and nod.
Yeah.
So.
There's not a rear entrance, is there?
No.
Yeah.
There is an exit, in case of a fire or a whale, but I guess there's a exit upstairs too, other access to the back.
I don't think we really have jurisdiction over if it's three people or four people. I mean, if it's a couple with two kids and three kids, then they pull out a couch, and that's really none of our business. It's pure business.
We really think it'll be one person at a time.
Probably.
Somebody burns asleep in bed, is that a good thing?
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of approving the special exemption permit, states or by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states or by saying nay? All right. You can move forward. Next, under unfinished business, anything miscellaneous that we've missed?
I got a couple things to just give you real quick updates on. Mayor, the playground is targeted for first week in March. And so over the next month, and I was just notified of that like an hour ago, but over the next month, we will be removing kids off. And we are going to try to salvage something. And most of it's totally deteriorated.
The swings and stuff are okay, right?
Yeah.
Maybe the swings could be used at the, the park.
We will do, we will salvage as much as we can, obviously, in moving, and you know, a lot of, we got wood planes, so a lot of.
Is any equipment for the new playground, has it been arriving?
It'll start, it'll start in the first, first of the month.
Okay.
So it's supposed to be delivered March 1st. Now, look, it comes in March 20th.
What about your spot?
Yeah. Now, the splash pad, we've, we've removed the kids pool. Our plans, or y'all voted to approve the splash pad, the material, the water line for that splash pad is coming in one piece at a time. It's ridiculous. So we're getting ready to go to bid real soon on the water project that y'all are aware of, and Sewer Lake, both of them are coming around. But the odds of suppliers being able to supply the material is almost zero. And I'd be willing to bet you that the water line project will be pushed back a year.
Because of materials.
Because of materials, yeah. So we actually ordered, not only ordered water line material from the other side of Virginia, nobody local, our normal dealers out of Roanoke that we buy from, nobody could fix.
So are the prices staying consistent now, or they continuing to?
No, they're going through the roof. But it's already paid for.
Right.
So the water line, we paid them upfront for all the material we ordered.
We'll get for the price.
We'll get for that price, yeah.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right, so next, new business, land lease tax, Mayor Drew Day.
Okay, last month, there was a little bit of discussion involved up about land lease tax, and this is actually some Virginia code that I didn't even know existed. Of course, I had no reason, never been in a position to take advantage of IDA, IDA property for the private sector. So everyone's aware that the idea is that we will own a sports complex fully, 100% paid for in the near future, but it will be leased to a private entity with an extensive contract, a longevity contract, hopefully. It's been my historical understanding that real estate taxes do not apply. But legislation 58.1, 3203, does allow the IDA to take advantage of a different type of real estate tax for this type of purpose. And I'm not going to go through the math and total, but if you'll, you can look at it, and this example is based on a $17 million parcel and real estate. So if everything there was $17 million, taking advantage of that Virginia code, it's not anything you have to adopt, it's a Virginia code, but for the county, it's worth $76,000 to them alone, and for the 10,000, $38,000. So that's just, that has nothing to do with the $30,000, $10,000 mill tax. And we'll get into that at later.
Any questions? All right, next, the trans occupancy tax, Mayor Drew Day.
Okay, just put it here, a letter, what we try to do once a year is pick an area that we serve, that public service, and try to communicate with our constituents out there. So a couple of years ago, we sent out letters, cigarette tax, we let people know, and we've even given them a heads up that, that the chief will be by, checking things out. It wasn't long ago, we, we sent out letters to barber shops, and right now, we're getting ready to send out letters to the meals, trans occupancy tax places. So we try our best to try to communicate. We fully realize that people come in, they'll start businesses, and they just don't know that they're supposed to get licensed, they don't know that they're supposed to be paying taxes, and, and we get that. And so we're not out, we're not out in any way, shape, or form to, to give anybody a hard time, and we, we do want to communicate the best we can. So I've always said, you're local government, you're world worth in communicating. So we try to, we try to expand on that. Just wanted to give you, gave you some information in there about what we were going to send out. If you got any questions, let me know.
Any questions? Okay, next is funding request from Crab Orchard Museum.
If you've got that in there, you can address it, or you can take it up on a later day. I would suggest that you take it up.
So we're going to have our first budget work session.
We're going to schedule it tonight. Try to, but better do it all at once.
Okay, so next is a funding request from Project Grad. Is this going to fall under the same, or do we want to think?
I guess it's the one you might want to address.
Yeah, they might. So who's the spokesperson there? Come on up, state your name and what else going on.
Yeah, I think I had three boys, and I'd been a little upset that you wouldn't want to hear us tonight. So my name is Karen Ross, and I am here again for Project Graduation at Tassau High School. And y'all know, we just trying to provide a safe and fun night for them. Just like we told the board of supervisors up there, we don't know what Mayor Jim is going to look like and what we're going to be able to do, but we are planning something. There will be something, you know, whether it can be an all-night thing, or if it's a few-hour thing, you know, for, for us to recognize them and, and celebrate with them. We, we will plan something. And when we get closer to and see what kind of guidelines and restrictions, you know, we put on us, then we will make that decision. But we are asking for, for help, of course, you know. We've been fundraising, these kids, you know, are working, trying to get money for themselves. So we are asking you all to help us as well again this year.
So I thought it was a donation from last year, a thousand?
Yes, thousand.
I'll make a motion for a thousand this year.
I'll stand in that motion. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the $1,000 donation, Project Graduation, states or by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states or by saying nay?
Now, I got a question. I can ask them for $5,000 for equipment, and an hour later, still be talking about. Y'all just ask for $1,000 within less than five seconds.
That's how that works.
Congratulations.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Congratulations. So next is a funding request from Brain Injury Services. Are we going to?
Just take that.
Okay, so we're going to push this until budget work session. Sydney, could you come up and give us a EMS update, please?
Well, Sydney, um. In your packets, I put some numbers in there showing trends with call volume and expense revenue since the beginning of the fiscal year. I just wanted to go over a few things with the expense. We're staying pretty steady, steady other than July, we order uniforms, there's a lot of firsts in July, you know, paying different benefits and stuffing the budget. And then in December, most departments get holidays off, while our people have to work holidays and pay extra pay for the days of working, so that's only the big expense in December. Revenue is picking back up. We had, October, there's a, there's a big dip there, you can see, we had some delayed payments from MSA and Heritage Hall. As you can see, the next month after, it went up more than, we're usually trending about $125,000 a month. But to the next one, the call volume, we're actually trending back up. It's been up and down with the new variants of COVID and trying to get hospital beds and get transfers out. We did sign up with Motive Care, which is a Medicaid provider, and we're a secondary provider for them, we can pretty much set a price on transfers that we're taking, so that's really picking up, and that's why we see an increase in the call volume. That's working out really well for us, and I've, I say we're going to see a big, a big change in the next couple of months in more increased revenue.
I'm a firm believer in improving the staff, doing work for COVID, TB, jet and black.
Absolutely.
The ones for COVID, kick, kick, they shut down the home federal transport, and you know, we got a new transportation, you know, it's a little bit of a year gone, so. You can also order the rescue squad, cancel first day, got that on the way.
It's supposed to be delivered in March, but they love it to May because they can't get the computers and the chips, and it's back there across the country, so now we're looking to May on that.
So how are you looking on equipment and everything? Expenditures, all your equipment, kind of about the snuff, or?
Yeah, I think so for now. You said, but we were worried for here from Corning Clinic for the life arm, which paid for, for the equipment we need for the new truck, for $9,500, so that, that took the whole lot. But other than that, you know, there's a lot of things on backorder now. It's hard to get some drugs and certain PP equipment, you know, supply and demand, the prices go up and down, and it's just everywhere right now, but you know, everything's going up and up. But other than that, I think we're, we're doing fairly well right now, we're a little, we're about $80,000 in the rate right now. That's fluctuating, and I see that, I predict that to go up here in the next month or two with the extra call volume from the contract with Motive Care, so.
Has there been anything about the new ambulances? That's what you said.
Is this in your March with the delay to May because of poor parts were?
Sorry, missed that.
Then when we get to May, it'll be.
Y'all have any questions?
And what we're, what we're going to have to start doing for the, for the rescue squad is every, every year, for example, I buy two crewers. And that way, they stay on a pattern after another war, five or six years old, unless we decide to pull one down. And every five years, we buy garbage trucks. But she's put so many miles on new ambulances that that's my next hurdle. So we're going to be plugging in some type of program, try to rest those.
Any questions? Chief?
Pretty good, there you are.
Good.
All right. Not much has changed with us. We've taken on a couple, a couple new members, we're up to 20 active members now, all of them, but the two newest ones, South Virginia State Fire Certification, so we've got a fully certified fire law. Equipment wise, I'll start with leaks and go to the grates. We've got all new air packs. We were granted 10 from Tassau County Board of Supervisors in 2020. We budgeted for six in 2021, and we got those, and we've got all new breathing apparatuses. These are all top of the line, up to the newest standards through the FDA. We ordered a rescue boat on Monday, we had to order one of those due to damage it received when we went to Richlands in flood making the spring. We were unable to repair the one we had, we searched and searched for about two or three months, and we couldn't find parts there. And it was an old piece of equipment anyway, so we were able to budget money to get that out and replaced. As for the building itself, we're still having roof leak during heavy rain storms. It's actually leaking, we're the media room and apparatus room, you don't, we can't exactly pinpoint where it is, so we've got a relatively good idea, but we're to the point where we're having to keep buckets in the floor and keep water out.
Donnie know that?
Yeah.
How long has that been going on?
Probably about five years.
Five years? Geez.
The asphalt on the parking lot, it's in pretty rough shape. I've addressed this before, we've got the, the seam of the asphalt going around the back of the building is actually separate, and so there's pretty much hole in the building or in the asphalt going around the back of the building. If you're standing in the front parking lot, you can actually see a dip, pretty, pretty good sized hole right there with the asphalt, as previously said. So we've kind of got a wavy parking lot, parking lots deteriorate itself. We definitely need to look, put a cap, you know, mill it out, redoing the whole thing all together. Engine 683, this is our newest pump, it's a 14-year-old truck, this is our first new out on the cobble. Truck works well, it's passed all its pump tests since I've been appointed in 2019, so we've had manual repair work done, and we've been on making an alternator, set of adders or something like that, so. Not going to do, no, no real issues with that. Our second out truck is a 20-year-old engine, it was purchased in 2002. When I wrote this out for you all, including the council package, Sunday afternoon, the truck was actually out of service. We had fuel neck problems, the fuel tank's actually got a large run. We had fuel neck problems, the fuel tank has actually got a large rust hole under. Air got the truck back into service yesterday afternoon, so the fuel neck's been repaired on it. However, the air, the air compressor keeps the air pressure built up on the truck. There's also some air leaks coming from the pump. We want two sensors to keep the, keep the airline, uh, air pressure built up in the truck. Those are on order through Atlantic. Again, it's, you know, hit this, but when you're going to hit parts. So we're, we're able to use the truck, we've got it functioning again. And, you know, we're, it, it also passed a pump test back in 2021. So, uh, this truck has, it's been a good truck. However, it's a twenty year old truck and it's starting to show its age. You take a twenty year old piece of equipment out and work it for three or four hours, then it's going to start showing somewhere to take it. Engine six eight four, this is the American France that we, that we have, the reserve truck. Only holds five hundred gallons of water. This truck has failed pump test since 2019. I let the lot pack test in 2020, in fact, it was 2019 when I had it tested. They said the truck was built with a pump, was built for private for truck in Bluefield. It was one of the last American Francs that was built in Bluefield. Years of wear and tear on the pump and just seals are gone. It actually has some of the original leather seals on the truck. Some parts for this truck are no longer available due to American France being out of business. August of last year, we were informed that we had somebody in Ohio that could fix the truck. So we shipped it up to Ohio, it'd sit up there for a couple of months. I'd say, kind of long story short, uh, truck's still not fixed and not operational. It's pretty much just an oversized manhole with few, a few pieces of hand tools and pieces of equipment and all. We run this truck out very last. We only use it if we have to. We are absolutely by no means putting firefighters on the end of the nozzle relying on a pump that won't pass pump test. Truck's thirty-two years old. Well, it was like I said, it was built in nineteen ninety, it was one of the last ones built in Bluefield. I had requested, uh, March sixth, the twenty twenty. I submitted pricing for a pump retainer replacement for this truck. It came in at eight hundred fifty thousand. There are other options available, pump wise, however you all would like to proceed on that. There's various other options we can look at for this. I'll address the obvious, white elephant in the room, uh, the ladder truck. This is a forty-five year old truck. Since I've been appointed as fire chief from 2019, we've spent almost forty thousand dollars trying to keep a forty-five year old truck functioning. I submitted pricing for a replacement on this truck on March sixth, twenty twenty. September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and March fourth, twenty twenty. We have sent through, as of this month, probably four price increases since the first price, uh, prices that I submitted for replacement for this truck. Also, if you recall back in November, twenty twenty, I submitted two letters of support from both Richlands and town of Bluefield Fire Department in support of us getting a ladder truck to support you guys on this project. See you very good job.
Reporting us with a letter or a money?
With a letter. I was asking a letter of support, so I didn't. Also, back December last year, the board supervisors have treated amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward the purchase of the truck. Contingent on the truck being bought before twenty twenty-four. I attended the emergency services committee, committee meeting in January. They tabled the discussion to send a letter of support to the board supervisors awaiting on what the town leadership would be bringing to table and support a ladder truck. I think there's been some correspondence back and forth.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that.
Unless they told one of y'all. I've not got any requests from, of course, he does. I haven't got any requests at all.
From?
From anybody, nobody else. There was an email that went out from Aaron in the last bit, they got a pocket on that, that's all I've got.
What was the most recent price, do you remember just roughly?
One point four million. Long, long story short, we've got a ladder truck that's forty-five years old and we've got a pumper that's out of service that's thirty, thirty-one years old. We're in need of the vehicle to keep providing services that we, that we provide. These men and women, they come out, they volunteer their time to answer emergency calls. They volunteer their time to go to schools on weekends. I think we need to provide them the equipment that they need to, to do their job successfully. Kind of echoing what the manager just said about EMS and PD, I would like to see the fire department get in on a rotational basis with their vehicles. You know, we, we've not had a truck in fourteen, fifteen years.
You need a new pumper truck, right?
Yeah.
Hey, the way I argued with them. Well, I know that. So still. Did the whole nine y'all? That has got a leak in the roof, been in there for five years. I thought that's going to be.
I did too.
Last year.
I did too.
It's not fixed yet. And that's more damage. Totally amazing, man.
Still looking for the shower also, right? The facility.
Yeah, we're still trying to find where to put that.
So if my math's correct, out of the four trucks, you've got two that are fully capable of doing their job?
Yes.
And two that?
Uh, and we'll, we'll find out on the ladder truck. It's supposed to be tested on the twenty-fourth of this month. So we'll find out if the current work, actual work.
Let's see, twenty-fourth of this month?
Yes.
Where's it gonna be tested at?
Station, fire station. Do you have us come in?
If I'm not mistaken, Jason, come in, the ladder truck, when they say it failed, don't, don't take that literally the way it sailed. It's not like it, it's not performed, but there were five items, if I recall. And I think we've got them all addressed.
We've, between the mechanics and Atlantic, I believe we've got everything fixed. And we got the documentation showing we have repair works. So that's something that they.
Every year that we take it, I guarantee you something will fail on it. Just like our bucket truck, which is why we had to buy a new bucket truck out of nowhere. So there was also a rumor, and I know I talked to Jason, he had no clue where it started. And I'm still trying to figure it out. But there was this crazy rumor out there that said if we don't replace the ladder truck, that ISO ratings were going to go up or down or negative or hurt or insurance is going to change. I'll tell you now, that's outright, that's outright lie. And I don't know where it came from, no, Jason doesn't know where it came from. But I can assure you, after talking to Jason, that that ladder truck, just like I said in the email, is performing. Is it at the top of its performance? No, it's forty-five years old. Is it in the middle? No, it's way down near the bottom, it's forty-five years old. We're gonna have, so what's gonna happen, like Jason said, you keep kicking the can, we keep kicking the can. And I said it in the email, y'all got it. Before you know it's going to be fifty, then fifty-five. And then it's going to not start. And then there we are. So, but I have no idea where the rumor came from. I do know that Eric Young, uh, there's two hundred and fifty thousand. I talked to Barry Brooks, Barry Brooks assured me that, that it would get, it would get approved at their next, next meeting. And it was my understanding, county was waiting on some information from me. I can tell you now, I've not got any requests from anybody at the county. And I'm still waiting on an email or something. So I've not got anything. If they're waiting on me, they'll be waiting for a long time. I don't have any requests from anybody. I also know that the county is working on a grant program that supposedly is going to help out the replacement ladder truck. But I can tell you now, one point two million dollars, uh, we don't have, y'all know that. It ain't going to happen, I mean, it just ain't there. So, yeah, we're, we're working toward it. And Jason said, you know, Jason said he, since 2019, I can tell you that from the day I started here, ladder truck, you know, these previous chief, we looked at. And there was a time in there, before we took on sewer and water, that those bonds could have been flooded. There was a gap in there, Jason's well aware of it, but that gap was missed for various reasons, another story. Anyway. And I think, as Jason said, your truck, that roof leaking for five years?
I think we should fix that now.
I, I don't know if that started.
Can that be fixed?
Yeah.
So Bluefield has that big ladder truck, right, that came down from Main Street?
They have a one million dollar truck.
That's a nice truck. Okay, and then does, who else has a ladder truck in the county?
Just us.
So Richlands doesn't have one?
No.
They're getting ready to get one.
And the county doesn't have one?
No.
I think you're agreeing with Jason, you will probably go more back.
So where do they park the county one? Or I mean, Bluefield, the city of Bluefield has one. County doesn't have one, Richlands doesn't have one.
Bluefield Park Service, the fire station, Calhoun.
So Richlands has a fire somewhere on Front Street or something. Something like, you got to go through here.
What is the deal, Jason, on the one that the county's looking at for the fit for?
I couldn't answer that.
My understanding, they're looking at one for the?
Yeah, they're looking at Russell County by, because it, the place's fire station's Belfast. So that's where they would keep it. So Russell County would buy it.
How many towns you have a year?
We ran a hundred and fifty-five last year, I believe.
Structure or?
No.
How many fires? Like house fires, what do you think fires?
I would say we ran fifteen mutual aid assistance calls and town calls, I think we were right at two.
Structure.
How many?
Ten, ten, fifteen for mutual aid purposes.
So like, for a town our size, with the amount of pump trucks that you have, what's the ideal? Like, if you were to get rated by whoever does that kind of thing, what would they tell you to have?
That's a true question, beyond sweet.
Because you're asking for something from people that at least most of us probably don't know. So you've got three pump trucks, two of them work, one of them doesn't.
The one, the, the one that doesn't work is actually considered a reserve truck. You get a very minimal ISO score for a reserve truck. I think it equals after like point two or one.
Pump water? Or just carry axes?
Uh, it'll pump, but it won't pump to a capacity. Pumpers are rated at a certain capacity to be able to pass NFPA pump tests.
Okay.
Uh, this truck will not.
The other two do?
The other two do, yes sir.
But if one of them wouldn't last week?
That's the one we sent off with, is Jason, the one you talked about. We did try, we did try.
You can't get the parts, I get that. So what I, what I want to know is like, if, if the people that come in and rate this stuff, how many pump trucks do they want to see that pump? How much water for a town this size?
Uh, probably two pumpers and an air with a pump on it would, would get you by.
Do we have that?
No, we've got two pumpers.
And what was the other thing you needed then?
An air with water on it.
A ladder truck?
A ladder truck with water on it. To get that rated capacity that they mentioned.
Our ladder truck doesn't have water on it?
No, sir.
But keep in mind, I mean, I'm hearing you asking two questions. There is no documented, certain letter of communication to Jason, the fire department or anybody that IRSO recognizes.
No, I get that, I'm just curious, like, what's like best practice?
Well, the more you got this, the more you're ranked in. The more you got, the better you're ranked in. Yeah, they want you to be, I guess Chris is asking, what is our happy medium, where should we be at?
We should at least be with two pumpers and an air at a fair amount.
So the ladder truck we have?
Does not have water on it.
It doesn't spring, so when they go up, it doesn't, they're not, they're not springing.
No, I haven't done it at all. It does, you actually have to have another pumper feeding it.
I was gonna say, I watched it have a gun at the top.
With a new, with a new pumper, new ladder truck, it has a pump on it and it will actually spring.
You have a pump truck down at the bottom with it, that pumping water into it. That's what happens.
So if, if we get a new one, it's going to have a pump on it where it can be a self-sustaining piece of.
Yeah, you don't talk to the two trucks. You can pop in the other truck, not sure. So I'll communicate with the county and find out what Eric was talking, I know the mayor aware of that, but I suppose a chunk of money out there, a big chunk. I can't remember who I was talking to earlier today about fire truck potential grants. But, you know, it, it's got, it's got people to a, to a point where buying a water line is stressful. Can't afford it. They.
Buying a water line?
I'm just saying, it's not just fire trucks. It's not just annually, it's, it's not just, I mean, it's every day. And, and you got a, you got an economy that's going straight down. And you got an inflation that's literally burping. And trying to, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm going to afford to keep a pattern of two policemen.
Right.
It's just crazy.
This is the way my brain works, it's like. Back when the rescue squad wasn't doing good, and I understand that this year was an anomaly, fifty percent, fifty percent, fifty-one, forty-nine percent, whatever it was, it was super close. The number of places you were going outside the town versus inside, in Calhoun, we lost hundreds of thousands.
Right.
And the county wanted to give us, I think it was like twenty-five. Right? And now we're asking for one point four, the county wants to give us two fifty. And how long will this truck go out into the county?
When it's requested.
Which is probably as much as it'll be in the town or more. It seems like we need a little more help from the county than, it may appreciate the letters of recommendation. Richlands doesn't have one either.
Can you get on the agenda tomorrow?
For the board supervisors?
Yeah.
There was, uh, there was an item on the agenda for the board and the Oracle teams that they were going to talk about and kind of having a fire truck.
So when you have, when you have fire departments that are struggling like ours and Richlands, could we work together and park it somewhere where it can get the both? I mean, I know it's not ideal, I know you want your truck and your building, but there's kind of, people gotta work together here, man. It's not like, I mean, I'm, I'm glad that we have a letter and I'm glad there's two fifty, if we can come up with one point two fifty.
What do you mean a letter? Were you talking about a letter?
The towns that gave us a letter of recommendation to get a ladder truck, or it's awful nice. Richlands, they say, yeah, you guys spend the one point four.
Go ahead and roll.
Yeah, we'd love to have it.
They're definitely going to support it just like.
Yeah, we take care of it. I'd love to send them that same letter.
Well, I'll talk, like I said, I'll talk to Eric and, uh, you know, Jason called me this morning and sent me a text message to let me know that it was, it was on the agenda at the county level. And again, they're not, I, I'm not saying they have to, I'm just saying I knew nothing about it. So Jason told me that they had, they had a contribution for, for out, out town travel. What was it on the agenda that they had?
Uh, in executive session, they had, talking about contract for service outside of town. And it's fireworks, fireworks protection.
Okay, it's plus, plus there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then there's a, there's an opportunity, according to Mr. Young, for a significant, a significant chunk that makes that ladder truck reachable. I mean, it was like fifty percent, that was a big chunk of money. So I would have to keep, I'll follow up, you know, I'll follow up with the county and we'll see where it goes. About all you do.
Just like anything, does the port look in for free money?
Absolutely, yeah.
Have we tried any grant applications to see if there's any money?
So I reached out to some, uh, some contacts that I had with FEMA, uh, through the firefighters assistance grants. So I reached out to some contacts that I had with FEMA, the firefighters assistance grants. They has pretty much said FEMA funding a million dollar truck is not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen. But you were looking for like air packs and?
Absolutely, if you look for PPA, air packs, stuff like that, you stand a whole lot better chance than the million dollar fire truck.
Let me ask you this, you might have answered it earlier. What, the, how many calls do you get a year with a ladder truck? So was that just ten, fifteen?
It bears a weird ear. I know we took it on one, maybe two structure assist calls after county.
But nothing. But then there's that one year where Main Street could have burned down.
That's right, you needed for that one, I understand that.
And there was a time that we were in a neighboring town twice in the same week.
Right.
Stuff like that happens.
And, and, you know, that's why I think we ought to work together, because, I mean, let's say that they don't come in with that big thing, and we spend one, and I'm just, this is a hypothetical. So, I mean, everybody's sitting on this bench, Emily on the phone. Let's say we spend one point four million dollars of taxpayer money, and it's used fifty percent of the time, sixty percent of the time, whatever it would be, outside of the jurisdiction of this town. How well does that sit with the taxpayers in this town? Not saying that they don't want it for their own safety, I get that. But they can't ethically not take it out of town, and I wouldn't want them to when something's burning. That's why I think we all have to come together countywide and make a decision about how we can afford to get this thing. And not just be the town of Tassau.
Jason, appreciate you.
I'm good, no problem, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jason. So next, we're gonna set the budget work session, right?
I'm ready, what do y'all want to meet? You gonna send out two, Paul?
Yeah.
You mean Robin?
Yes.
Give Melissa the answer, Paul.
So next, we need miscellaneous new business. So now we're at miscellaneous public comment. And we do have one. So please come up, state your name and address, and what they're here for.
Hi there. I'm Amy Killen. My address is one sixteen English Street in Tassau. Additionally, I own one forty-five Main Street and one thirty-one Marion Avenue. I just wanted to thank you all for supporting this new Airbnb. I know it's a new world, and, but I think it's really important that you guys continue to support that because obviously we need capacity to keep people here to maximize on your tourism dollars. So my Airbnb has done really well, staying very busy. I'm gonna be the property manager for one sixty-eight Main Street and Main Street. That would be really well as well. So thank you all for, for supporting that. I love the packet that came out with the information on how to start your Airbnb business. Very informative, but I would be remiss if I did not say, I'm a little concerned about what I just heard. As I make sure property owners, the second story, the building on Main Street.
Get your little door, babe.
Well, that's a very serious concern. I'm not a little sure how to, not only for my building, but for anybody's as well. Just wanted to make that comment. Thank you all very much for having me this evening. It's been fun.
So next, we're gonna jump down to council comments. Anybody? She said ground hall.
And same way, we're up here on Main Street.
Any comments, Jeff? Dave?
I think the police department's done a good job, I've seen this year, through that ordeal they went through, commanding chief and the department of their, of their professional side, taking action in the right way.
Dr. Muller? Dr. Brown?
What, sir?
Dr. Cattie? All right, if nothing else, we will get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor of adjourn, states if I say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states if I say nay? If you can adjourn, you can always.